I'll now call this regular workshop meeting. It's Jacksonville City Council order. Tonight, we have an agenda, proposed agenda for the meeting. We also have the minutes and some consent items on here. Entertain a motion to adopt.
So move.
And adopt and approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say the 5%.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So we'll flip the page over here, and we're going to talk a little bit about police best practices. And Chief Funes and Deputy Chief Weaver are going to tell us a little bit about this.
Mayor, Council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about our police practices. I think this is really important, given what's happened in our community and what's happened in the state over the last several weeks. Senate Bill 300, which is a reform bill for police, has been passed. And there are a number of things that that bill includes. But we kind of like to talk to you a little bit about that Senate bill, but in fact, talk a little bit about what we're doing as far as best practices. Because a lot of what is included in Senate Bill 300 and some of the other bills, the Jacksonville Police Department has been doing for a number of years. And so, you know, we talked a little bit a number of months ago about our overall strategy. And when we talk about policing with a purpose, we're doing things a lot different than we were 20, 25, 30 years ago. We're looking at a number of different things. And I think nothing really demonstrates that more than what we're doing with the mental health process. We have two crisis counselors, I think. Thank you.
A little police training on the spot there, folks.
And so, I think when we talk about what we've done from the mental health standpoint, it shows about that we've been very purposeful in what we've done. We have two crisis counselors. We have one that's focusing on youth and focusing on the opioid issue in our school system. Then we have another one that has been taking care of a number of different things. In fact, she has worked with about 200 homeless people over the last year, trying to resolve some of those issues, trying to get them into housing, trying to get them to where they can have some resources. So I think that whole process shows about how we've been very purposeful in what we've done to make sure that we're following best practices. And we talked about crisis intervention training. And crisis intervention training has been the basis of a lot of what officers are trained to do in the field. It's our goal to have every officer trained in crisis intervention training. And we've been very successful at that, very successful in getting them into crisis intervention training within the first year. I think it's important to talk a little bit about crisis intervention training because that changes the perspective of the officer, especially when they're dealing with so many crisis intervention calls. And when we looked, we're answering about 1,000 of those calls per year. That doesn't include some other things like domestic violence and things that are very associated with that. But it is a lot of what we're doing on a day-to-day basis. And so, that type of training and how we look at how we approach those calls has been very beneficial for us. And we'll emphasize that when we talk about use of force. The other thing that we're talking about doing is the Violence Prevention Programs. And we know about the DARE and the GRAPE program. We also know about the Child Abuse Prevention Task Force, which we had a little presentation on. But we've been actually in conversation with the hospital about a violence prevention program to try to address aggravated assaults and folks that come into the emergency room that have been assaulted and working with them on a peer-to-peer basis to try to prevent these violent acts from occurring. And so, there's a number of national models out there, and we'll continue to work with our community partners to try to implement these violence prevention programs so that we can, in a sense, prevent these violent events from occurring. We also talk about the Safety and Wellness Task Forces that we have. The opioid substance abuse, the SOAR team, was a UNC grant and is partnership between the city and the county. The Child Abuse Task Force, the TASCO, is another partnership between the city and the county. And those task force are designed to look at those particular problems, the opioid issue and child abuse in our community, and look at them from a prevention standpoint and also from an intervention standpoint. The Child Advocacy Center, some of the things that we're doing that we'll talk about in just a second, the LEEDS program, what we've done, what the council has done with the Mental Health Task Force and the opening of Dick's Crisis Center, and those things that are associated with that Dick's Crisis Center, the grant program in order to get people into long-term care, all those things are very important in community wellness and looking at at least those two issues from a community perspective. There's been a lot of discussion about community policing. And, you know, we've been very successful in several awards, won by the ICP internationally in 2019, and then by the North Carolina Police Executives Association, which was in 2020. And both of those center around our community policing process, which is really how we encourage our police officers to connect with the community. We do a lot of different programs, the Front Parch Roll Call, Coffee with the Chief, Coffee with a Cop, National Night Out, just to name a few. All those programs that we do are designed to encourage officers to engage with our community. And we think we are very engaged. Are there things that we can do better? Yes, there are. And we'll continue to work on better connections with the community because that's really the basis of the community policing process, looking at community problems, engaging the community, and we've been very successful in that. We're also talking about, when we talk about the opioids, how we collect and use data. This is the DDAC program, which is a program that we've been using for a number of years that actually focuses on traffic enforcement as a way to reduce drug crimes. And so, what we do is we look at where crimes occur within the city and then target traffic enforcement in those areas. And so, those things help us determine what the best strategies are in those areas so that the collection of data. The OMAP OD map program is the overdose mapping program for opioids. And so, if we have a number of opioids, opioid deaths in those areas, overdoses, then what we'll do is we'll target some enforcement in that area in the hopes of being able to reduce those. We've had a tremendous issue and continue to have an issue with opioids, fentanyl, in our community, and we'll continue to address that the best way we can. The other thing I think that's important when we talk about best practices is some of the things that we've been doing to address those both before the arrest and after the arrest. The LEEDS program is a program that it's law enforcement assisted diversion, first-time drug offenders, what we're bringing them to the Dick's Crisis Center. We have about five individuals that are moving through some form of the process in the hopes that when we caught them with drugs, that one of the things that would happen was they would get the treatment, get off of drugs, and become productive people in our community. And so, we're excited about this. This is obviously, it's not a volume program, but it is a program that we will see some significant results. The Quick Response Team is a partnership that we have with the county, and it's a post overdose team so that the police and the community paramedics are going out there after those overdoses occur and try to see what kind of services, see if we can get them into some type of program so we can get them off those opioids. And then our misdemeanor diversion program is something that we've just launched this year and is focused on the middle schools and the high schools in order to divert those folks from, divert those kids, actually, from criminal charges and put them into programs like the Teen Court Program and some substance abuse program. The COSAP grant allowed us to get that, one of those crisis counselors, and she's been working with a number of children in those schools to try to get them the services they need, especially if they become addicted or are using some type of opioid or other substances. And, you know, all the things that we've done to try to look at how we treat addiction as a public health crisis versus a criminal justice crisis. And I think you should be proud of your staff because they have worked diligently in order to do that. The opening of the Dick's Crisis Center, which the council spearheaded, the COSAP grants, the SOAR program, the Co-Responder Program that we're partnering with the county on these crisis intervention calls and overdose calls, we're sending a community paramedic. And that community paramedic sometimes is more effective at dealing with that situation, even on a long-term basis, than our officers. And so, getting them into treatment as quickly as we can so that we can address that opioid issue, opioid or methamphetamine or whatever that particular substance abuse would be. So I think while these programs take a long time to see results, I think our community is going to be seeing some real positive results over the next several years, thanks to the commitment that's been made here. The other thing that we've been working on is we've been working with the North Carolina Sheriff's Association, North Carolina Association Chiefs of Police, and the UNC School of Government to look at citations and how we write citations. We're part of a study program that's across the state. One of the things that we're looking at is when do we write citations, what's safe for the community? And we'll be going through that program over the next year or two and obviously changing some policies over the next year. We're looking at arrests and citations in lieu of arrests. We already did some of that with shoplifting and misdemeanor marijuana possession. But we'll look at everything that we do, everything that we make an arrest for, and see which types of arrests can be made or need to be made and when is a citation appropriate. And so, that's part of a statewide study in order to look at that particular program. And we talked a little bit about the behavioral health specialist that we're looking at in the school system. So we're looking at those kids that need help. Currently, she has about 42 children that she's been working with over the last several months, and we're seeing some real positive results there. We've also been working with the school system to do some specialized training. Last year, we did threat assessment teams. A threat assessment team, because if a child says something out of the ordinary, we look at the team and we treat that as a holistic approach. So we did some training. We brought in an expert from the state of Virginia who's had these threat assessment teams. And each of the schools have a threat assessment team within the school. And if somebody makes an off-the-wall comment or there's some type of threat that we learn about, I know that you've probably seen that in the paper before where a threat has been made, these threat assessment teams with the school system, with the guidance counselor, with the police department can effectively address those. And so, all of our SROs have been trained, all of the school personnel have been trained, and we're excited that this program has been up and running for about a year now. And we talked about the misdemeanor diversion program. The other thing that's gained a lot of attention is the no-knock search warrant, especially a no-knock search warrant that occurred in Louisville in Kentucky several months ago. Obviously, Kentucky's laws are very different than North Carolina's. On a no-knock search warrant, we are required to have it evaluated by a judge before we use that. In the past five years, we've probably not used any of those no-knock search warrants, and they have to be approved by one of the command staff. And so, our policy is very restrictive on those. And obviously, once it gets through our policy review, it has to be reviewed by a judicial official. Can't be a magistrate, it has to be a judge. Judge has to look at it and determine that a no-knock search warrant is valid. No-knock search warrant is where officers do not announce themselves, they simply rush in and serve the search warrant. They can be very dangerous on both sides.
Please explain the purpose of the no-knock.
So a no-knock search warrant can be used like in a hostage situation where there's a danger if the officers enter the house and either evidence could be destroyed or lives can be taken. And so, a no-knock search warrant is used a lot of times when there's a hostage situation. We don't knock on the door and enter the door and tell them we're coming in to save the hostages. And some search warrants that have to do with drugs. Sometimes if it's a high-risk search warrant, a no-knock search warrant would be used. But again, those have a lot of scrutiny involved in them. And so, our policy requires it, plus it's a judicial review.
Order of procedure. You have to approve it first before, and then a judge has to?
Then a judge has to approve it. And some of that has to do with what happened in Kentucky because those were not approved by their command staff, they were simply approved or taken from a detective. They obtained the search warrant. It didn't have the judicial review that's required, and there was a lot of scrutiny over those particular search warrants. And I would go back to that no-knock search warrant because it is the basis for our use of force policy. It is that basis that the most important thing in everything we do is to preserve life, the sanctity of life, those principles. And I think we've been very successful in that. We've had some significant reductions in use of force. And, you know, we've strengthened our policy and continue to strengthen our policy. The de-escalation process that we've talked about and we've heard about for a number of years is a process, and it's not something that we do. It's not a class, not a 40-hour class. So we've been incorporating it in a number of different disciplines. The CIT training has a de-escalation piece. All of our training, to some extent, has that de-escalation piece, simply teaching officers the correct way to do a traffic stop, how to de-escalate that situation. Nobody wants to be stopped by police, so it becomes heightened. How can we de-escalate that? How can we improve that? We've worked on that for a number of years, and we'll continue to work on that process in order to try to minimize the use of force in any situation. And there's been a lot, there is a lot of talk, there's a lot of talk about different models for use of force. We use this one, it's the Critical Decision Making Model. It's not a use-of-force continuum. A continuum means that you do this, I do this, you do this, I do this. That's not necessarily, doesn't lend itself to de-escalating the situation and resolving it as peacefully as possible. So we use this Critical Decision Making Model, which is more of a circle. And it allows the officer to gain access, slow situation down, and then hopefully be able to resolve it without having to use force. We still have to use force on occasion, but the number of times that we use force has drastically reduced. And you can see that in our statistics. We went from over 100 incidents back in 2012 down to around 20 incidents. Our goal is to be zero, that's an ambitious goal, and we'll continue to work with on that training piece and that de-escalation process in order to do that. The other thing that's been discussed is having first aid kits available to make sure that officers treat somebody if they're injured. Our officers generally go on calls that require some first aid. They answer potential heart attack calls, difficulty in breathing calls, they carry AEDs in their car, they've all been trained in basic first aid, and so they have basic first aid equipment. So one of the things, one of the suggestions was to have first aid kits. We already have that, and we already have the training, and we continue the training. Every officer has to go through CPR every year, make sure they understand how to use that AED, make sure how they understand how to use those pocket masks. We're very grateful to the fire department who helps us navigate this process and work with them. They've worked with us diligently to help us with the administration of Narcan, which every officer carries Narcan. So we have a very robust first aid program. The duty to intervene is something that you might have heard about, and this has been our culture for 20-some years. In fact, this is a copy of a letter that every employee gets, that we talk about their duty to intervene as police officers, as police employees, because we give it to our telecommunicators and our records clerks as well. They do have a duty to intervene. And this is, as the chief, my expectations, that they will address something if something occurs, something illegal, something that's not right. And we've had this policy for a number of years. That is one of the parts of Senate Bill 300. But our policy has said that they have a duty to intervene, and this letter is given to every employee before they start with our police department.
Explain a little further duty to intervene.
So duty to intervene means that if an officer comes on the scene and they see somebody using excessive force or doing something criminal, they have a duty to report it. And so, there's been a lot of discussion because of the events in Minneapolis about having that duty to intervene. That's always been our policy, it'll continue to be our policy. Again, we provide them this letter so that they understand that before they become employed with us, that it's our expectation that they will intervene if there's something, not just an excessive force, but an officer stealing something, an employee stealing something, an employee making whatever those things might be, violations of our policy, understanding that we expect a high ethical standard.
Thank you.
And psychological support. There was a lot of talk about doing psychological tests with our crisis counselor. She provides services to our current staff. We have a grant that we are providing, an app to all of our employees in order to get mental health, in order to improve their mental health. I mean, over the last number of years, we've just began to learn
Thank you.
about what the impacts of police work and PTSD are to our first responders. And so, the app will help us, it'll have opportunities for them to get help if they need it 24/7, but it'll also give them some practical suggestions on what they can do to improve their mental health. And so, our goal is to make sure that, you know, is that they maintain not only physical health but mental health as well in order to prevent burnout and to improve our ability to help them do what they need to do. The fair and impartial policing, we've done that for a number of years and will continue to do that, to talk about our biases and how we approach those and use those to make sure that we're making fair and impartial decisions. This has been going on for about five years. Every officer has gone through the training or will go through the training, depending on their status. But it is the cornerstone of what we do, making sure that we're treating everybody with respect and that we're promoting trust in our community. The accreditation process. The accreditation process is a process that allows us to look at best practices and to implement those best practices. One of the things Senate Bill 300 is a personnel early warning system. We've had that system since probably the mayor's been, was a patrol officer or working through the accreditation process, and we'll continue to have that process. And what that does is we look at pursuits, we look at use-of-force incidents, we look at sick days, we look at everything that the department does, basically. And then if we see where somebody has a lot of sick days, they've used force too many times, then it allows us to intervene before that becomes an issue. And the accreditation process has forced us to look at that, and it's been very positive for us. So personnel early warning system, which is one of the tenants of Senate Bill 300, we've been using it for a number of years. We've also been looking at what our future looks like. And the Sturgeon City Institutes have been very beneficial for us. Our Explorer Post has been very beneficial for us. And our goal is to look at the potential recruitment that we have in these young people. And we'll continue to make those investments. We'll continue to participate with the Sturgeon City Institutes that focus on public safety. We'll continue with our Explorer Program, which is quite robust. One month they're doing police, one month they're doing fire, in order to encourage them to look at a career in public safety. And I think at some point in time, we probably should come back and talk a little bit about one of the greatest challenges that we're going to face over the next several years, and that is the recruitment and retention of police officers. Right now, there's about a 45% increase in retirements, 39% increase in resignations nationwide in departments. And in North Carolina, we certified 2,000 police officers last year, we lost 2,500. And so, there are a number of challenges that our community And so there are a number of challenges that our community and all the communities in, in our state are going to face as far as recruiting and retaining qualified folks. So that's, that's going to be a real challenge for us, especially when we talk about diversity and we look at how we can improve diversity. Over the last number of years, we've, we've been very successful in increasing the diversity of, of our department. We'll continue to work on that. It's not where we want it to be because we should reflect what our community looks like, but, but we've been working on that. We've been working on how we, how we can be a more reflective agency through a number of things, through our recruitment process, through our, our promotion process, all those And when we think about the labor pool that we're drawing from, military's the same way. There's a lot of, of challenges that, that police officer candidates are going to face. The use of drugs, some of the physical fitness processes, there's a number of things. And so as we look at what our future looks like, the, the ability to recruit and retain qualified applicants is going to be a challenge over the next five years. And, and I think policing in general, I can, from my experience, and I know the mayor could probably say the same thing, policing has changed over the last thirty or forty years and will continue to change. And so our staff has been working hard on addressing those challenges and will continue to address those challenges.
Mike, go, go back two slides, or three slides if you would a second.
That one?
One more.
One more.
One more. One more than that. Sorry about that. Get the next one back. You know, one of the things, the chief's done an excellent job of giving you an overview, but we also need to remember, when people look for a job, they're also looking at a community. And that's why it isn't just about the pay, it isn't just about the benefits. It's what role do you have as the mayor and council for the quality of life in this community? People don't relocate their car, they relocate their family. There are places in this country that people no longer want to live. Every Monday, Ron and I meet with new employees. About three weeks ago, one of the new employees we met with was a police officer, and he was moving from a western state. And he told me the reason why he came to Jacksonville was because of the quality of He did not have the support in the community he was coming from. And if I mentioned that community, you would immediately recognize it. The point I'm making is, when you look at your job as the elected official, remember, your job is to balance a budget, but your most important job is to make sure you're building a community that people want to live in. So it's everything you do. It's not just about the police budget, it's not just about any of the police tactics that the chief has talked about. It's everything. It's about how the garbage is picked up, it's about how clean your streets are, it's about the elimination of slumming blood, it's about quality recreation programs, it's about all of that. Because if you're going to have a quality staff, you're going to have to recruit locally and people are going to have to want to continue to live here. If you're going to have a quality staff at every level, you're also going to have to recruit regionally, statewide, and nationally. So never underestimate anything you look at as an elected official, you need to think, if you would please, of the big picture, of is this building our community for the long term? Now, Mike didn't have any slides on that, so I apologize for my kibits, but I'm sincere. As your, as your manager, that's the way we have to look and you have to look, holistically. Mike, any other comments?
Well, again, I think, I think we've been, you know, in, in talking to my colleagues across the country, we've, not that we're at the place that I'd like to be, but, but we've been very fortunate as far as recruiting and retaining officers. The, the, the step program was a, a big part of, I think, of, of helping us with that. We'll continue to have challenges, but, but I feel very lucky to be here versus other, other communities in the country where they're, even in our state, there's one, one police department that's similar size to us, has eighty-four police openings. I don't know how they operate doing that, but, but they're having some significant challenges. So, but I'd be glad to entertain any other questions that you all might have.
I did have a question about your policies, or you mentioned traffic stops. And I was curious, what is the protocol procedure of, sometimes I'll see somebody stopped and there'll be one police officer present, sometimes I'll see them stop and there's two or, or maybe three, is it just a happen chance or?
Sometimes it's happen chance, sometimes it's not. It depends on the particular stop. I mean, if they find a gun, there might be.
Okay.
There might be some potential to have more than one officer there. Or if there's a particular issue with that particular traffic stop, where somebody's not being cooperative, they may, they, they will send an additional officer there. And then sometimes an officer who's driving by will stop there and make sure that the officer's okay before they go back to whatever duties they might have. So it really just depends on the volume of calls that they have at that particular time and what that, what that particular situation might or might not be. If we're going to make an arrest, we like to have two, two officers there, because sometimes that can help.
De-escalate.
De-escalate the situation.
How many, how many potential officers are you looking at going through the local academy here right now?
So we have, we have four candidates in there right now, four pre-hires that are in the, the BLAT program right now. We're looking at probably maybe three or four more after that. And, and then we're also looking at the January class. So I can see the potential of us hiring around eight candidates from this, this current class with the four that we've, that we pre-hired, and then probably at least four more in this, this next class.
What's the maximum capacity of one of their classes? I don't remember.
So this is the first, this is the first class that they've had, the maximum capacity is thirty. The last class that they had, they just had ten folks in the, in the class.
Is this due to people, is this due to a lack of?
We've seen a, we've seen a significant increase, I believe it's about a forty percent decrease in BLAT across, across the state of potential candidates.
Decrease.
Yeah, decrease.
Don't actively, still do a lot of active recruit, recruitment?
Yes, we're actively recruiting. You can see us on Instagram, we're doing some recruiting with Instagram, trying to use the social media to, to do that. And we're also going to, to BLAT programs around the, around the region, trying to recruit folks from, from those BLAT programs as well. Somebody that gets into the BLAT program has a little bit of interest, and so that, that helps us kind of gauge those folks, they're more likely to want to become police officers. And if they're toward the end of the class, that helps us with not having to send them to training.
Chief, when it comes to behavior, dealing with the behavior health specialists in the schools, are you, how early are you seeing issues?
I, I think, I, I think most of, most of what she's doing is in the middle, in the high school, but I know that she's been in the elementary school as well. I think the youngest, I think she said the youngest person she had was nine years old?
And some of what she deals with is the ancillary things of substance abuse in the home. So she deals with a lot of the elementary kids that their parents are involved with substance use disorders. So she helps provide services to the family as a unit so that the, the child can have a, a healthy education environment and have the support that it needs to, to be a success in school.
Starts with the parents.
The, the bill or the, that's in the General Assembly, is there anything addressing cameras, body cameras?
No, there's nothing addressing body cameras.
Good. Has, has, has your outlook on body cameras changed? You know, we've had this discussion with you in the past, but what are you seeing out there nationwide with the results? There's been time to study now, and I'm sure there's been some, some papers written, and I'm sure you've seen, read some articles, and you're also talking to your peers nationwide. So what do you hear?
A, a lot of agencies are, are going to both the in-car cameras and body cameras. And that may be another discussion when we get toward the budget again. The problem, again, is the cost of the body cameras, not the cost of the cameras themselves, but the cost of the storage. And when, we have ninety-eight patrol officers, if you take one gig per officer per shift, that's a tremendous amount of storage. And some of the, some of those videos would have to be stored for twenty-five years, depending on felony and misdemeanor cases and, so, so that's going to be the real challenge. And that, that's, I mean, that's on top of what, because we would never want to get rid of the in-car cameras. The in-car cameras is a much better platform for us to see what's going on in the field than, than the body cam. I think, I think eventually we're going to have to look at body cams again and, and, but hopefully at some point in time, somebody will come up with a better idea of how, how we can store that video so it doesn't cost us that much money.
Well, the body camera is probably most effective if you're inside somewhere.
Yes.
Like in a residence or a business or something like that. But the in-car camera does have a wide range of scope that it does pick up.
And the, the ones that we've replaced now have actually two frontal cameras, one that is wide and it's, it's almost, I mean, it's almost car door to car door, and then one that concentrates on it. The one that's wide is distorted somewhat, but it, it, it gives us a, a better view of it. The officers, I, I, I think the officers are used to it. I don't think body cams will change their perception. Most of them like the cameras, because it helps them in court, it helps them with a number of different things. But I, I do think that when we get back to budget discussions, we should look at maybe discussing the implementation of body cams at, at some point in time.
Have the blind, have blind spots been reduced by the, the cameras that you have now?
Yeah, with the new cameras, because they're wide angles.
Right.
We've been replacing those over the last five years. I think we, we, I think this was the last year of those that we had before. So we had, they actually have two cameras, a wide-angle lens, so that you can see from door to door, and it has one in the back, so you can see in the back. The problem with the, the one in the back is it goes through the cage, so it's not as clear as the front two cameras. And of course, the audio is on all the time, so as long as they're within, within sight distance of their car, they, they can turn on their audio anytime they want.
Fair and impartial policing, how do you measure like cultural competency?
Well, the, the course, I mean, there was a Department of Justice course, and so it really doesn't talk about, about cultural competency. What it talks about is recognizing that cultures are different. So it's kind of a, it's a little bit different than that. So it really doesn't go into each particular culture, but it does talk about what we need to do as, as police officers to learn about the culture. And we do that to some extent in our, in our police officer training program. We have a, we have a, a portion of that where the officer goes into a particular neighborhood and learns about the neighborhood, talks about the problems in the neighborhood. But really, the fair and impartial policing is designed to teach them that we all have biases, and if we're going to, we're going to police in a fair and impartial manner, then one of the things we have to do is realize that we do have those biases, put them aside when we're, when we're dealing with them, and, and try to make sure that we're being as fair and impartial as we can.
But you got to first realize you have biases before you can even.
And that's, that. And that is really the, the crux of the course. You know, people will go into that course and not realize that, yes, I do have bias. Everybody has biases. And making them understand that is the first step toward making sure that those biases don't interfere with how they police their community.
That's a good segue into technology. If you don't mind, let's spend a few minutes talking about the CAD and RMS.
Good evening, council. So back during budget discussions, we brought forward the fact that we would need to begin looking at replacing the CAD and RMS system, and that we were working with the county on trying to obtain one system so that it would all be integrated, which would help with many, many issues. The biggest being the effectiveness of the officers and the efficiency of their work product. So real briefly, a lot of this is repeat from last time, but we go through and explain kind of what CAD is. It's our computer-aided dispatch, and it tells you who all uses that program. It's not just the police officers, it's our telecommunicators, it's our firefighters, it's our crime analysts. The information that's in CAD is also, some of it is public records, so when people are moving to an area and they want to know if the neighborhood or the street that they're moving onto has issues or has had anything, some of that information, date, time, nature of the call, is public record, so that is given to the public upon request. Our, I changed my slides, sorry. The RMS system, it encompasses essentially everything that officers do. It is their mobile field reporting, it is the, taking the report out in the field, it is doing the citations out in the field, the citations being brought into the system, the traffic crashes in the field, the field interviews, those are the, when an officer gets out with someone who's in the park after hours, they haven't really done anything that you want to cite them for or arrest them for, but you want to know who's out and about that hour that haven't been. It helps to either clear crimes, crimes, and in a lot of cases, actually exonerates those people for crimes that they might get accused of, because at that time, they were out with an officer, then clearly they weren't committing that crime. The, our investigators use, use RMS system when they are following up on leads, when they're doing their case management. The officers use the RMS system whenever they want to take a case to court, their entry of evidence, entry of property, maintaining all of that information, knowing exactly where a single piece of evidence is in the thirty-eight thousand pieces of evidence that is housed at the Jacksonville Police Department. It can be difficult, the RMS system contains all of that. Our crime analysis, our crime analyst uses it. We use it for staffing purposes, on knowing when the high call volumes are, what types of crimes are occurring, that we need to potentially put a task force together and put a, a set of officers out on and deal with those problem issues. Our bicycle registrations, our permits, everything goes through our RMS system. Again, the people that use it, officers, the supervisors to, to manage what the officers are doing. But additionally, something that we do in Jacksonville is the District Attorney's Office actually uses our RMS system. So rather than kill trees and print off copies of reports and send them over to the DA's office, they can actually log into the system and view the report themselves. they can actually log into the system and view the report themselves. And then if they need something printed off, they can print it off right from the system. So it, it really helps with that case management, not just at our level, but also at the District Attorney's level. The current system, we began using in two thousand and thirteen. July of two thousand and thirteen is when we went live with that system. At that time, our call volume was roughly a hundred thousand calls for service. Since that time, we've increased over fifty-four percent. We're at a hundred and fifty-five thousand calls for service. And as of this morning, probably, on the citizen-initiated calls for service, we're up seven percent from last year at this same time. So we're probably going to see another increase for, for this year. That one should have come up. So one of the challenges and why we're here and why we're discussing it is the current system that we use has issued an end-of-life statement for the platform that we're on. They will continue to support it, but there will be no updates, no upgrades to the system. So what we have right now is what we will continue to have. So any efficiencies that we would like, they will not be able to, to provide. And they will not support any, any changes to the system. So anytime there's a legal change where we have to start tracking a certain piece of information, we'll not be able to add it to the system.
When did we convert to that system?
We went live July two thousand and thirteen.
But that system was actually, it's been bought so many times. You, you probably purchased that system.
Was it the offshoot of the old HTC?
Yes, it is the same company, yes. So it was Sun Guard. It was Sun Guard, then OSSI, and now Central Square, that's.
Seven or eight times it's been purchased by different companies?
So we, we're saying almost twenty-five years it's been.
Yes. So ultimately, going forward, even if we did stay with the same company, we would have to migrate to their new, new platform. So we actually went in. One of the other issues we have is the service level decline. And then it also doesn't interface with the county. So the CAD-to-CAD, their system is separate than our system. We've tried, on many occasions, to get the systems to talk, to send calls over, but it does not. So it does not interface with the county at all. As I talked about before, and you can see, it'll, it'll again increase this year, but this is how the trend has been for our calls for service. We separated it out into three things. The citizen-initiated, which is really what we focus on, because that is a citizen calling the police department, calling nine-one-one, calling the admin line, asking for an officer or for some type of service from the police department. The self-initiated, this number is sometimes argued because this is not just the traffic stops, but this is also if an officer pulls up on the scene of a traffic crash before someone's had a chance to call it in. It goes in our system as self-initiated. However, that would have been a call for service had the officer not shown up on scene. So those numbers get, but we err on the side of caution and add it on the self-initiated than the citizen-initiated. And then administrative, that's your court time, that's your training time, that's your meal breaks. That's all of the things that are required to do the job that are, that are not responding to calls. So we have the opportunity to join with the county. They are looking to move to a new CAD and RMS system. That actually, if we got on the same system and did one system, it would actually interface with not just the county, not just the county's nine-one-one, the sheriff's office, but also the hospital. So not only for the police department, but for the fire department on doing those EMS calls and those runs. That information is entered one time and is sent to the next person, to the next person, to the hospital. So it's not entered four and five times into four different systems. It's one system, one entry, and it moves throughout the system. To the point of the nine-one-one call comes in, the nine-one-one dispatcher enters the information as they're running tags or licenses, and they're putting the person's information in. The officer then can then pull it from there and doesn't have to enter it. The officer can then push it over to the jail if it's an arrest, and they don't have to enter it. It's just one entry, and it moves all the way through the system. So the efficiency in that will save absolute time for all parties involved. It also will allow us to see each other's information. As it is now, our RMS system is separated from the county's RMS or the sheriff's office RMS system. So they may have dealt with someone thirty and forty times. They have a history with the person, they know what the person's triggers are, what to say to them, what not to say to them, but they move into the city. And we've never dealt with them. So with a shared system, we would, they'll be able to see all of that same information, and we wouldn't be going into a situation blind. We would actually be able to see all the, all of their past occurrences. Additionally, the crime analysis and being able to, to really dig down into what's occurring, what's been occurring historically, you know, is it the same time of year? One of the things I can speak to is usually around February, March, when it starts to warm up and people take their motorcycles out of storage. Our motorcycle thefts will usually start rising at that point. So that's one of the things that historically, we can actually dig into and see if we can pinpoint something or an area and things that we can change, maybe our deployment of personnel, or we can put our PSAs out at that time. You know, remind people, hey, that is, you know, lock your cars. Don't leave your purse on the, on the front seat of your car and make sure the doors are locked. Those kinds of things, when we see those trends occurring and try to get ahead of them to prevent them from happening, to be more proactive. One of the other things that really will benefit the city and the county and our citizens is that multi-jurisdictional capability, that ability to interface with not only the sheriff's office, but the county EMS, and hopefully, also be able to interface with Camp Lejeune. That has a little bit more to it, but the idea would be that, that they would also be able to access the system. So in the RFP, the Request for Proposals that we put out, we had two responses. It was narrowed down to Motorola. This is the total cost for what is proposed from Motorola. The recurring cost would be three-ten. This is still a negotiation, these are not final numbers. No contract has been awarded, but we're in the point of seeing what they can give us versus what, because our radio systems with Motorola are, one of the things we've talked to them about is our maintenance, and seeing if they can apply maintenance to the system towards the purchase price to help try to alleviate some of those costs.
That current recurring cost, that one forty-five, is, is what we're paying now.
So that's what, yes, that's what we're paying right now.
County's paying roughly the same amount.
So ultimately, the recurring cost, if, if it was split fifty-fifty, which those are other things that we have to, would be roughly the same.
What are, what are all the entities that are on that system now, or will be?
So Otso County nine-one-one, Sheriff's Office, and Jacksonville.
There's, there's been some discussion about, about the other municipalities and how it interfaces with theirs, if they would, if they would come on to the system. The volunteer fire departments, EMS, there's some other folks that, because the CAD is the, is the linchpin for all that, that.
That reduce our costs?
It could reduce our costs. So, so that's going to be a discussion that we're going to have to have as far as, when we get to the next point, when we talk about the potential for the grant, there has to be some discussion about how much we'll pay, because that two-point-five million dollars also includes a civil module that, that Jacksonville wouldn't use.
It also is. It's what, please?
A civil module, which is for civil papers and things like that. And then the jail module. While we're very interested in how the jail module works, we won't use that module at all. But, so, so there, so when you look at that two-point-five million dollars, that's, that includes those other portions that we wouldn't be using as well.
But it doesn't include any cost to the other municipalities?
No, it does not. But there, there, and it depends. I mean, we're still in the negotiation phase. So say a small municipality wanted to come on to the system. If they came on to it as simply the sheriff's department and didn't have a separate system, then the cost would be very minimal, because we're buying a site license. It's, it's, anyway, it's a little bit complicated. If they want it segregated, like ours will be segregated from the county. We'll control our data, they'll control their data. That, that's a, that's a discussion on how that, how the system would work.
So to help with some of the costs, the county and the city applied for the nine-one-one board grant for some of the ineligible expenses. The CAD portion and some of those pieces would be eligible, nine-one-one board eligible. So those costs could be covered by the nine-one-one board. They did award a grant at nine-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, which is only a fraction of the system. What they came back and said was that the RMS portion and the JMS portion, the jail management, would not be covered by the nine-one-one board. So there's still, there's still a cost that would be transferred to the county and to the city.
That's about, it's about, it's going to cost us roughly around one-point-five million dollars. Both the city and the county. Depending on, on the modules and what, what bells and whistles are on it. I don't think that's a fifty-fifty split, because again, that one-point-five million includes the jail module, it includes the civil module, and then also some, some portions of the EMS that would be included. We don't know yet, because we're, we're still in negotiations, but we're getting to the point where we're looking at what the final cost would be. We've been working with the vendor to try to figure out if we can buy it over time. One of the things that we did with the eight-hundred-megahertz system is that they gave us five years of free service. If they did, then that's a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that we wouldn't have to pay out of our budget this year, or next year, or for five years. So, so we're still kind of in that negotiation stages before we get to the point that we come back and ask for a request.
I think the good news is we now know the cost of the system is roughly two-and-a-half million. We now have a grant of a little over nine-hundred thousand. The county manager and I are already in discussions. We're going to be having meetings with the, certainly with the police and sheriff's department, with our finance people and their finance people. So over the next several months, we'll be working out the final arrangements that we will bring to you. I think the good news again, though, is we're beginning to see the figures become what I'll call more, more dependable figures. Now whether the city's going to wind up having to put in three-hundred, four-hundred, five-hundred, six-hundred thousand dollars, at least we know now it's in that ballpark. Anything else y'all have on this? Any questions about where we are on CAD and RMS?
Well, I, I think there's two reasons for that. One is we continue to grow. And I think, you know, as you, as you get more commercial, as, as we have more traffic, we're going to continue to grow. So that's going to mean continued service. And, and the other thing, I think, when you, when you, when you look at that is as, as we become more responsive to our community, the call volume is going to go up. Because people, people, people will want us to respond and to work with them on a particular issue, whatever that issue may be. And so that's not unusual. It's not unusual to see call volumes go up and crime rates go down. But again, it, it does present us with challenges as, as we, as we move forward.
Thank you. It has been done, or how it would be done, but I was wondering how, have you done an analysis concerning what it would save concerning time?
Are you talking about the, the records management system?
Right, or, you know, being able, because I, I work for VFW in the VA system. And I might would use twenty, sign in twenty different screens to get to different things I needed. Also, you had no communication with DOD systems when people were trying to go from active duty to being a veteran. So I knew that, you know.
The real beauty of working with the county, and I said, while we're not going to pay for the jail management system, I'm very interested in how it works, because what it will do is it will allow our officers to have, enter that information and it to go into their jail booking forms without us having to touch it, without them having to touch it. So in a sense, when an officer is on the scene doing an arrest report, that information will be into the system. And when they get to the jail, it will cut down the amount of time they'll have to spend at the jail. And so the same thing happens when we talk about the nine-one-one calls. Right now, when you do a nine-one-one call, and we have to, we have to engage the county, we have to call them on the phone, and then tell them what, what the call is, transfer the caller, transfer that information. If the systems are connected, what will happen is all, all that information will be dropped into the county, they will have it real time. And so we'll know, or they'll know if, if it's a call in the city and, or a call in the county, that they, that they have to respond to, or a call in the city if EMS has to respond. They'll know that real time as our telecommunications are working. So the, the savings of time by combining the system is going to be very beneficial. It's going to be very beneficial for the officer on the street. Right now, because of the way our system works, an officer that has evidence has to come into the office, type in that information again. Won't have to do that anymore. He'll simply hit a button, he'll print out a barcode when he gets to the office, puts the barcode on the evidence, puts it in the evidence locker. So a, a lot of the, a lot of what we're doing now that was going to require multiple steps will allow us to, to be able to, to do that electronically, which will give them more time to engage the community. And so, and, and obviously, that's one of our goals, is to make sure that they have that time to engage the community. And a, a robust records management system will allow us to do that.
And to your point, some of the things we've talked about with them is creating single sign-ons for other systems that do integrate into our system. So you're not signing into eight different logins for all the different systems.
Thank you.
We anticipate negotiations to occur over the next two or three months and then bring you a final report, hopefully before Christmas, so. Mayor, we have one other item we'd like to do. I know this was very beneficial. John Carter is going to talk to you very quickly regarding Fire Station Four.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Fire Station Number Four is a shared facility. I think the reason I stand in adherence to some of these other folks that work there a lot is because I know a little bit about the history of how it became a shared facility, so I can share that with you this evening. But I'm not alone. Mr. Bittner was here for a lot of this time, and I ask him to correct me if I get anything incorrect. But it's a shared facility between the city, the fire and emergency component of our fire department, and also the county EMS. It was built in the two thousand, two thousand and one timeframe, which I'm going to get more in detail here in just a moment. As you can see, the design, it has three bays. Two of them are for city fire and emergency services, one for the county EMS. Has offices and sleeping areas and storage. It's located on Commons Drive North. It is a fire station, it's manned twenty-four-seven, has fire personnel, and the equipment is listed there. I wanted to take a moment here and tell you a little bit about the history of this particular building. In nineteen ninety-seven, March of nineteen ninety-seven, the city council elected to lease eight-point-eight acres to the county for the EOC building. Now, if you, everyone knows where the EOC building is on Commons Drive. If you stand in front of the building and you go on the other side of the driveway, if you will, and you go to about where the actual, I think it's four-hundred-foot tower is, that's the eight-point-eight acres of land in that area. There was also between the tower. There was also between the tower and over, because of the guide wires, that many of you've seen and know what I'm talking about, there's a period, a property of 5.29 acres that are an easement tract for the tower and the guidelines. This lease was a 99-year lease, so it actually expires in March of 2096. So it's got about 75, 74 years left on it. Couple of things I want to point out in the lease. Of course, it was leased to the county for the use of the EOC, or E911 facility, as they called it then, but it said, "No other use of the property or sublease could be happened without the permission of the city." And then it has this line, "Notwithstanding the foregoing, comma, nothing contained in this agreement shall prevent the county and the city from entering into such supplemental agreements as from time to time may be mutually beneficial and agreed upon by both governmental agencies." And it's kind of under that clause where we find a little bit later, a couple of years later, that Fire Station number four came into creation. Again, going back to the five acres, 5.29 acres where the tower is and the guide wires, it also says, that's just an easement, and it says, "The city reserves the right to utilize the portion of the property not reserved for the tower for such purposes as the city may require. Additionally, the county agrees to permit the city to use, the use of the communications tower for its communication needs." So that was March of 1997. Mayor Shook was the mayor then. In February of 1999, another agreement was entered into, and this was the agreement whereby Fire Station number four came on that property. I think you need to reflect back, some of you will reflect back, Mayor, others may reflect back, there was a sense at this time, Mayor Jones was in office at that time, that there should be opportunities for the city and the county to partner so that the cost to the citizens, that is county citizens and city citizens, were reduced. One of the big discussions at that point was something that did not materialize. Some of you may remember this, I certainly do. It's an L-shaped building that was to occur at the intersection of Marine Boulevard and Court Street. It was a multi-story building. One wing was to be county offices, one wing was to be city offices, and in the middle was supposed to be joint city commissioner meeting rooms, or council rooms, commissioner rooms, additionally, multiple different types of, of conference rooms that could be reserved for either city or council use. Again, trying to do that. For several reasons, that didn't occur. One of them, of course, is we still have the, the hot dog stand and the, the fish market there today, but again, it was in that L-intersection where that was occurring. But it's in that time set, that in February of 1999, under Mayor Jones and his council, they envisioned a joint use of the EOC, the sleeping quarters, the kitchen bathrooms, and so forth. So in February of 1999, an MOU was signed. Now keep in mind that in April of 99, the minutes were reflected, only 60% of the EOC was even completed. So we don't have a fully operational EOC at this time. Even before that occurred, the city council and the commissioners came together and decided to agree to this agreement that allowed for Fire Station number four to go there. And this is what that agreement, some of the points it says. "The county will make available to the city the common areas located in the EOC. These areas included sleeping quarters, day room, kitchen, bathrooms, and showers." And then it goes on, "The city will provide, among other things, will include an apparatus bay for the EMS squad and three offices for squad use in the construction of Fire Station number four." So you kind of see here where there was a give and take by both city and the county to hopefully make this thing work at that time. Now there's other agreements that really have no bearing on it, there was an E91 console agreement, and there was an amendment to the lease, at least in 1999, because the county went and borrowed some money from Centura, which was the predecessor of PNC Bank, to build the tower, and the bank wanted some insurance that they didn't pay them, that the tower would belong to the bank, and there was no problem there amending the lease with that kind of condition. The, in September of 1999, still 1999, the fire station was bid out. And the fire station came back around a million dollars. But one thing that the fire station didn't come back with, it didn't have a prime contractor. You had four subs, basically, you had four Indians and no chief. Mr. Ward knows exactly what I'm talking about. And you had a general contractor, Delphi Plumbing Contractor, Kipco Piping, HVAC was Blanton out of Castle Hain, and the electrical contract was TNT Electric out of Beulahville. Well, it was built, and the plaque, as Chief Tallman told us, says it was completed in 2001. But it certainly required, as I recall, a mediation for there to be a settlement with, because there was finger pointing there at the end, but we did, of course, bring that to a resolution through a mediation. Now the next thing to occur at this property was in 2015, under, again, this time, City Manager Woodruff, was an amendment to the 1999 MOU, because it states it had been, come outdated and so forth. So at this time, we have an amendment to the MOU that says now, and I'm going to just go over a couple of points, the city's use of the EOC is totally relinquished, we gave it up. The Fire Station number four will continue as a joint-use facility, remember, they have one bay for the EMS. And then the specific areas designated for the county EMS units and specific areas for the fire department in the Fire Station number four. And then there was the split of utilities, three quarters, city 25% to the county, et cetera. And so that was amended. The, there has been an email, which I know that the manager shared with you, and I'm going to let him speak about that, this, the county, as you know, would like to now, or wants to, of course, this third land, have a lease on it for another 74, 75 years, to build onto the EOC, the building, the E. And I'm going to let Dr. Woodruff talk to you about steps moving forward, and I'll actually advance it for you, sir.
Thank you. End of the lease, do the, all improvements become the ownership of the, of the city?
Yes, sir. Except for that, that tower goes to the bank if it hadn't paid off.
You may recall that more than a year ago, there was a discussion with the county commission about building a new EOC out at Burton Park. That discussion wound up with no direction, my words, not theirs. The county is receiving roughly $38 million through the American Rescue Plan. Two Mondays ago, the county commission adopted an ordinance that laid out how they would be spending their $38 million. $11 million has been earmarked for the county to build a new EOC, and they plan on building it on the eight-acre site that Mr. Carter has explained to you. We have received a call from the county asking, "Would the city be interested in selling the fire station?" I can tell you that the city Fire Station 4 is not a fire station that really meets our needs. It was not necessarily location-wise, it was certainly located at a point where we had annexation laws that are very different than they are today. I think Chief Tallman, who's certainly welcome to come up and address this too, would tell you that Fire Station 4 is not currently as functional as it should be, because of the location and the fact that it's no longer really in the center of a response ring. He would also tell you, and I see he's now coming up, that the facility needs to be expanded. The sleeping quarters simply did not work out in the EOC. Just, we won't go any further than to say that the bathing and sleeping facilities just didn't work out. The staff currently sleeps in their offices. So if we stay in that building over the next several years, you'll see a capital improvement program to expand that building. Interestingly enough, the only way we expand it is to expand on land that the city owns but is under a 99-year lease to the county, so technically it's county land. That wasn't a legal opinion, John. So, we have an opportunity, we don't know what that opportunity looks like. What we know is that the county is going to be expanding, they do not have a site planned, they're just now engaging the attorney, the engineering firm, architectural firm, to lay out some concepts. We know that in the near future, we are going to be facing a capital improvement program. So what the recommendation on the board is, is to authorize the city attorney and the city manager to meet with the county and determine more details as to what they mean by, "Would you be interested in selling it?" You know, I have an F-150 pickup truck, and I will tell you, not too many moons ago, I had a salesman, who y'all all would know very well, call me and say, "I need for you to come down and buy a new truck." And I said, "Well, I didn't realize you have any new trucks." He said, "Well, we don't, but we need to buy your pickup truck so we can sell your pickup truck that's in good shape, and eventually, we're going to have a new pickup truck in, you know how the, the issue is with those chips." Well, that's really where we are right now with this offer. The county manager did not say we're going to buy it for $11 million. To me, I, I think I would have signed that right away and then come to y'all, ask for forgiveness. But the point is, we don't know the details. We do not need to be put in a situation where we negotiate without y'all's blessing. Y'all's is, pardon, that's not a good, good grammar. We're coming tonight saying, "This is an opportunity that we don't know what it looks like, and will you authorize us to go and negotiate and bring you back more information?" Now Chief Tallman can talk to you a little bit about the issues that he faces with that station, but the real question before you tonight is not, "Are you interested in building a new station?", it's, "Will you authorize us to go find out more information and bring you back more details, so then you can do a cost-benefit analysis as to whether this is a good idea or not?" Before I, I ask you to address that, though, T, any comments you want to make about Station 4?
No, sir, I think you covered it.
You're not going to talk about the snakes that come in in the middle of the night?
No, sir, I'm not going to beat that drum anymore.
Questions that you have about the request before you?
What do we, Fire Station number two, what was, what was the end cost on that?
Generally, $3 million. I don't remember whether that was $3 million plus the price of land. Ms. Mages, do you remember?
I have the numbers right.
It was right close to $3 million, with the design and the land. But the land was of, helping Mr. Carter, and they did a donation for some of that.
Oh, I'm sorry, T has that information, T?
Yes, sir, it was two and a half million for the station, about 350,000 for engineering fees, and 140 for the land.
Thank you. And is, if they obtain the building, is it just to? Well, and that's part of the problem, Mr. Thomas, is at this point, we have so little information. We don't know whether, we actually don't know, nor do they know, where the new EOC is going to be located, whether they would need to actually tear down Fire Station 4 in order to build it, you know, we, we really are at the very beginning of, of this discussion.
Everybody okay with them pursuing this?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
We'll report back to you in the next several months. We would like to do, if you don't mind, close out this and then go into closed session?
Do or do a one-city moment?
Okay, don't we have a one-city moment?
Yes, sir, we do. The one-city moment will really speak for itself.
31st, 2021, I had, I was proud to be able to present the Civilian Action Award and an outstanding citizen pen to Aleisha Nicole Wright for her heroic actions and outstanding contribution to the Jacksonville community. On July 24, 2021, at approximately 5:28 PM, Jacksonville police officers responded to a residence in the city in which a two-year-old child was on the roof. Aleisha was playing outside with friends when they, when they observed the child climb out of the window. Aleisha asked her friend to call 911 and ran to the residence in an attempt to notify the family. There was no answer at the residence. Aleisha spoke with the 911 telecommunications to provide information to send first responders to the scene, and she stayed on the phone with 911 until the first responders arrived. During this stressful incident, Aleisha remained calm and provided the necessary information to obtain help quickly, ultimately preventing the child from significant injury. And she was quite, quite the young lady. Appreciate her efforts.
For the one-city moment? For the one-city moment? Thank you.
Entertained a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second. We're going to discuss property, some property.